Welcome to the selectmen's meeting for August 27, 2013. Call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Colin McNabb present.
Bob Plamont present.
Sulisio present. I'd like to make a notice that the meeting is being tape-recorded. Chairman's additions or deletions? We have none. We have a small modification on 3.8, name change to Terry Roy. Excuse me. 1.4 Review and approve meeting minutes of July 30, 2013. Did I just have a chance to look at them?
I did. I have no.
Yeah, I have none either.
No changes.
Entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for July 30, 2013.
Seconded.
They moved and seconded. Other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll skip over that one, okay? 3.1 Review and approve request from the Abram S. French Fund Committee to approve funding in the amount of $400 so that the committee can provide assistance. Have a motion?
I make a motion.
Don't do whatever you do with that. You don't say the name right.
No?
Yeah, we actually asked Renee to leave the name off.
Just as it's written on the agenda is fine, right?
Right.
I make a motion that we approve the request from the Abram S. French Fund Committee to approve funding in the amount of $400.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Not those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
3.2 Review and approve applications from Unitil to cross-alter and/or construct within a townway at the following locations. Can we take those all together?
Yes.
40 Turnpike Road for new gas service installation, 550 Main Street, and 13 Turnpike Road for new gas service installation, 6 Terrace Way for new gas service installation, and 10 Barker Hill Road for new gas service installation. Have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the applications from Unitil to cross-alter and/or construct within a townway at the following locations: 40 Turnpike Road, 550 Main Street, and 13 Turnpike Road, 6 Terrace Way, and 10 Barker Hill Road.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Quick question. Is that new bylaw in effect as far as, not the bylaw, but the modification?
Yeah, the change is in effect, so these are just services, so there'll be a narrow cut. They shouldn't have really any effect on the condition of the roads.
Making sure that the road is going to be?
Correct.
Yeah, we'll make sure that it's buttoned up properly.
Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
3.3 Review and sign contract with Air Cleaning Specialists of New England for installation of an air cleaning system at the highway garage with a contract price of $24,700.
This is an exhaust system for the highway garage, especially important in the wintertime when the doors are closed and the diesel vehicles are running, get the exhaust out of there to benefit of the guys that work there.
This came before the capital planning committee last year. It was, it looked, it's going to be a good project. We went through it pretty thoroughly.
Good enough for me. Other questions? If not, all those in favor? Oops, I didn't get a motion. Well, then do that.
I make, yes ma'am. I make a motion that we sign the contract for the Air Cleaning Specialists of New England for installation of an air cleaning system at the highway garage with a contract price of $24,700.
Seconded.
Now it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.4 Review correspondence from Xfinity regarding digital network enhancements and encryption of programming. Andy, you want to talk to this?
Yeah, just briefly. This is, we've posted this to the website as well, just a notice really for subscribers to Xfinity Comcast that there'll be some, for some of you, there'll be some equipment upgrades that will be needed as part of their enhancements to their system. The, on the second and third pages, there are samples of the letters that will be going out, or maybe have already gone out, to residents, so really just a kind of an FYI, pay attention to your mail. This is legit. It's not, nothing phony baloney about it, but make sure that if you need to take advantage of the new equipment to keep your service, that you follow up with Xfinity. No action needed on the part of the board.
And this is not, this is at no extra cost to the?
Correct.
To the rate, to the customers?
That's correct.
3.5 Review mandatory referral notice form, the planning, from the planning board regarding a wind energy systems bylaw to be included on the special town meeting warrant.
The planning board's been working with MRPC, the Regional Planning Commission, on a wind energy bylaw, and they've got a bylaw that the planning board will be holding a zoning public hearing on, and they'll be putting this on the town meeting warrant in the fall. So if there's any comments from the board or from anybody else?
Right through it. It seems to be straightforward. It jumps out there.
We're not, we're not a great candidate for wind power here, but it's one of those, one of those better to have it and not need it, to need it and not have it, so it would be good to have in place in case we do get some interest or the technology, really what is most likely to change is the technology could change that makes wind more attractive or more financially profitable.
3.6 Declare as surplus the building department's 2000 Ford Explorer and authorize its disposition.
We talked about this back during budget season when a decision was made to not replace this vehicle. It was during the capital discussions. It's 13 years old, it's got about 160,000 or 170,000 miles on it. It was a former EMS vehicle, and Rich Hanks has been using it for a number of years, but it's getting to the point where it's going to need some substantial work if we were to keep it on the road, so it makes sense at this point. We don't need it, and in fact, even under, even if we wanted to, under the green communities, we can't give it to another department. We're really limited on how we pass along these vehicles. So we'll see if there's any interest out there. We'll be, more than likely, we'll be doing both vehicles at the same time. We declared surplus a fire vehicle a couple of weeks ago, another Explorer, so we'll probably put them out together, see if there's some interest in those.
And so where do you advertise those?
We'll advertise those on the website, and I'm not sure if we'll use the newspaper or not because the anticipated value is pretty low, but?
So people just bid on it?
Yeah, we'll solicit bids. We'll put together, yeah, we'll put together a simple bid package and, with a deadline, have people respond by the deadline. We did one about two years ago. There was an old, very old fire vehicle, an extended cab, F-350 or something like that, and we did the same thing, a few hundred dollars, I think, on that one. We may get a little bit more on these. Somebody with some mechanical know-how might be able to get these in good working shape for short money.
Maybe they can flip them. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we declare surplus the building department's 2000 Ford Explorer and authorize its disposition.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
3.7 Review correspondence on the status of the North Middlesex Regional High School construction project. They do this in four minutes, Andy?
Sure. Yep. This is just a brief update. This is on the school website as well. They have a, they have a page of all high school-related information, the high school project. They've been approved by the school building authority, the MSBA, to proceed into the design phase for a new high school, so they're working on that now with the design architects and their, and their project manager, and expected to come to the three communities in the spring of next year, town meeting, and a debt exclusion override vote at some point in the spring. Timing of all that is still being worked out. It may make sense, as we talked about it in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, it may make sense for the communities to have a special town meeting in March or April in anticipation of a debt exclusion vote that would appear on the annual election ballot, so, but those conversations are still going forward, and some decisions on that will be made in the next, I would say, the next probably two months or so, so, but it, for those who are not familiar with the project, the feasibility study looked at the existing building, looked at the feasibility of renovating the building, and it was determined that renovation was not a viable alternative, not a cost-effective alternative essentially, because of the cost that would be incurred in trying to retrofit that 50-year-old building, so the school committee is going, or the building committee is going forward with plans for a new school on the same site that would be a little bit smaller than the existing school, and then when the new building is finished, the existing school would be demolished and parking constructed and athletic fields and things like that, so. So there'll be a lot of conversations about this over the coming months, and as I said, certainly a town meeting item and a debt exclusion item.
Just a little comment on that, because I'm on the building committee. It's important for folks in town to try to tune into those broadcasts of our meetings, if not come to the meetings as well. There's lots of information. Things are moving very quickly. It's a tight schedule, and we want to stick to that schedule because we want to make sure that we hit the dates that we'd like when the town meeting comes and everything else, but we had a discussion last night, quite a lengthy discussion actually, on whether or not to submit a request to the MSBA to go into the model school program, and after much discussion, we decided against that. It would have delayed the project by at least 12 weeks just to get an answer back, and it didn't look likely that it was, it was going to work for us. Again, please, please tune into those sessions if you can. It will help when town meeting time comes if people are informed, okay? And we're doing what we can to reach out to the community as well.
And there's lots of info on the site, too.
Yeah, the website, they have done such a fantastic job of posting things on a regular basis. There's diagrams, there's plans, there's explanations of what we've talked about. It can be a little overwhelming.
There's a lot of information.
It can be a little overwhelming, but at least, you know, the information's there for folks, so we're trying to keep people informed. Anything else on that?
No, I was just looking at the different scenarios that were presented and what was ultimately chosen, which was a reduced scope, new building, and the different costs associated with each phase.
And the MSBA doesn't, they don't just give things away either. They, they came back to us a couple times for more clarification and before they approved that as well, so it has to be a good fit.
What's the amount of state funding that they're matching?
That still is, is up in the air. Right now, it's expected to be a minimum of 57%, but that could change. Is that correct?
That sounds, I know it was over 50%, I didn't know what they got.
And you get, you're eligible for points on that as well, for different kinds of It's too soon to say exactly what it will be, but as you go through the design phase, you find that there are things that you can design in that can help with that reimbursement. They give you a bonus for doing certain things, okay? Okay. That takes care of 3.7.
I'm sure they'll be doing a whole presentation on that.
Go back to 2.2.
In your packets, I put together the, this little cheat sheet that we put together, just kind of a checklist of the items that need to happen during one of these appointments. This is for the appointment of one or more trust fund commissioners, and the first two items are taken care of. We posted the meeting, or posted the vacancy, rather, posted the joint meeting. We did that several weeks ago, and so now it's a joint session of this board and Lynn LeBlanc from the trust fund commissioners to fill the vacancies.
So number one is checked off. Number two is checked off, and we are calling a joint meeting with the trust fund commissioners.
With the trust meeting only one.
Yes.
Fortunately, there's three positions that need to be given up that should be filled. I have filled one, but I don't have a quorum, so I really can't do anything, so. Dave was nice enough to fill out a form, so with your permission, I'd like to have him on board, and so that we can get this commission going.
So how, is that appropriate? I mean, if there's only one person?
Yeah.
That one, by default, becomes a quorum, no?
It's, whoever is here among the two committees.
As a body?
Yeah.
Okay.
This board can't meet without, without a quorum, but the, but the vacant, the committee that has the vacancies is whatever members are available can meet.
Okay, so you're nominating?
Fanoli.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Yes, you can.
Is it?
We as a?
Oh, yeah, we mean jointly.
Yes.
Collectively.
Any other nominees?
No, I haven't found any other nominees.
Okay.
We didn't have anybody reach out to us to express any interest.
Not yet, I'm still trying.
So we'll be going through this process again at some point to fill the third slot.
Okay, so could I get a roll call vote, please?
Bob Plamont, aye. Colin McNabb, aye.
Lynn LeBlanc, aye.
Sulisio, aye. Thank you. Unanimous.
Congratulations, David.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Dave Fanoli becomes the candidate that received the majority votes. Unanimous votes with many things, and so he will fill the position until the next annual election.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so that, do we have to do anything to close that?
Yeah, you should adjourn that joint meeting.
Got a motion to adjourn?
Before you do this?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
If you email me, I might be able to find somebody that might be interested.
But only if you email him.
No, it'll remind me of it, that's what I'm saying.
I have so much.
Will I find your email address in the town website?
I can send it to you.
Thank you, Andy.
Could I get a motion to adjourn the joint?
I make a motion that we adjourn the joint meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. 3.8 Review and approve one-day special license for Terry Roy, VFW Post 6538 for wedding reception September 7, 2013, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Is that a motion?
That would be nice.
I make a motion that we approve the one-day special liquor license for Terry Roy for VFW Post 6538 for wedding reception on September 7, 2013, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.9 Set dates for the special town meeting and close of the warrant. Recommended dates are Tuesday, October 29, 2013, for a special town meeting, and Thursday, September 19, 2013, for the close of the warrant.
Looking ahead to, to the schedule, to the calendar, tried to pick a day that would seem to give us enough time to get free cash certified and all of our other items in place, and give us enough time to put together a warrant, and also importantly, to avoid conflicts that can negatively affect the attendance at town meeting. I like to try to avoid weeks with holidays, obviously the big holidays. The closer you get to Thanksgiving, the more problematic it becomes, and to the extent that we know of conflicts for staff or other players at town meeting, try to avoid those. So it looks like October 29 would be a day that works pretty well for a, for a town meeting. If something comes up and we need to change that, we obviously can do that anytime prior to the posting, so we did that, we did that two years ago. We ended up moving it around a little bit because of some conflicts, but I want to at least get it out there so we can give departments and petitioners time to get articles to us.
Works for me.
It's fine.
Susan? Work for you?
I don't have a problem with it. I don't, I'll be contracted, the moderator.
I did send him an email. I haven't heard back, so I know there's a lot of people in.
You can't replace me, but you can't replace him.
I know there's a lot of vacations still going on, so.
Who's he, he has John fill in if he, if he can't make it, though.
John, right?
Pardon me?
You appoint a deputy at each meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay. Let's go.
So if that's, if that's okay with the board, I'll go ahead and notify everybody of that, and like I said, if we need to change it, if it turns out that moderator's not available, that, that day we can, we have some flexibility still.
Okay.
Like a motion?
Please.
I make a motion that we set the date for the special town meeting for Tuesday, October Andy, do we do the whole, do we have to make the, the date of when the warrant articles should be?
We should, yeah.
Okay. I make a motion that we set the date for the special town meeting of Tuesday, October 29, 2013, and the date for the close of the warrant as September 19, Thursday, September 19, 2013.
Does it need to be a time on that?
By bylaw, it closes at 5:00.
Close of business.
Let's put that in there, then.
Seconded.
I'd like to amend my motion to add the time of 5, Thursday, September 19, 2013, at 5:00 for the close of the warrant.
I'll second with that, with that change.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
3.10 Receive update on the status of the FY12 and FY13 audits. Mr. Shin.
I've put a memo in front of the board tonight. We had talked about this back in June. I don't recall if I did a memo at that time. I think I was, I think I just gave a verbal update to the board on the status of the audit and?
And that was on the management letter, so.
Correct, correct, and that's what I focused on, on here as well, and those are, you know, that's kind of the meat of the audit is the management letter and the items that are referenced there. The, I spoke with the auditors today. They have got about 95 or 98% of the information that they need. We hope to be able to get them the last few items this week, and they can wrap that up and finish up the fiscal 2012 audit. They've already started to work on the 13 audit, and so that should come much more, much more quickly than the 12. There's a little bit of, a little bit of history, and I won't read the memo to the board members. Chelsea, if you're interested, there's a copy of the memo. There's a little bit of history. Up until fiscal 2010, we used our E-Brown to do our audits. Department of Revenue recommends that you not use the same audit firm forever, that you change it up every now and again, you get a fresh set of eyes, so we did that for the fiscal 11 audit. The first year, when you go to a new audit firm, typically takes a little bit longer because they have to, they have to build their history, their history with the town, get to know people, get to know our processes and everything like that, and so we started with Melant and Heath in fiscal 11. They're doing fiscal 12, and as I said, they're already working on fiscal 13, so. There were a number of items that they, that they identified in the fiscal 11 audit. Those are laid out in this memorandum that I've put in front of you tonight, and they are, they are likely to be repeated in the fiscal 12 audit because we were well into fiscal 12 by the time, or almost through fiscal 12, by the time the audit for fiscal 11 was wrapped up, so we just, we didn't have the time to, it was impossible to address these issues in time for fiscal 12. So I'll go through them quickly. The first item at the bottom of page one is improve the cash reconciliation process. That process is underway. We're reconciling with, with the auditors for our books for fiscal 12. It's been helped and hindered by the new software that we put into place. We were anxious to get the software in. We think it was still the right decision to make at the time, but it did, coming at the end of the, the end of fiscal 13, it did put quite a burden on some of the departments to both learn the new software, get the information into the new system, as well as do all the regular work, and do the, do the items that are relative to the, are relevant to the audit, so. So it's pushed us back a little, a little bit, but it's been beneficial in the fact that it forces us to make sure that everything is, is up to date as we move into the new system, so. We expect the reconciliation, as I said, for fiscal 12 to be complete in, in the next week or so, and we've got some reconciliations to do for, for the current year that we're into for 14, and then we'll, we'll begin to implement the steps that we need to have in place so that we don't run into this problem again and get, fall, fall behind again in the future.
Question on that end? It references implementing procedures to ensure that we do not fall behind. It references implementing procedures to ensure that we do not fall behind. Are these written procedures?
They will be, yes. And it's really, it's formalizing the communication between the treasure collector and the accountant to make sure that everybody's on the same page and doing what they need to do on a regular basis, generally on a monthly basis.
Andy, because of the extra work, has any cost been added to the audit?
No.
In other words, is it, it's not your typical audit where it's a little bit more involved than it has been in the past in terms of reconciliation and other issues?
Right. It's taken a little bit longer. It's probably taken them a few more hours than they anticipated or than it should have.
That's a straight contract price?
But it's a straight contract price.
Okay. So the extra time and effort does not add to the cost of the audit?
Correct.
Okay.
Item two, improve controls over water activity. The concern that the auditors had there, and this was something that the Department of Revenue also was concerned about when they came in in 2011, is that you have the same couple of staff people that commit the bills, take in the money, approve abatements, approve payment plans, things like that. They want to, the auditors want that, those processes segregated a little bit. And so they're working on that. It's hard in a small department like that, but they're working on that to come up with some operating procedures that would segregate those duties. It will get easier when they implement their automatic meter read program, which will be, hopefully will be in place before the end of this current fiscal year. It's currently out to bid now. So once that's in, it will take a whole, take a large piece of the office staff's manual effort right out of the equation. It will go from a mobile collection right into the computers.
Question on the implementation, basically. Is the water department going to compensate whatever, I assume, whatever departments are affected, like the tax collector, or in terms of, you know, paying for?
The water department will still be doing all of those steps.
With no cost.
Yeah, there's no, none of those steps are coming over here. The water department is still going to do that, but will be, among the water department staff, those items will be, those tasks will be more clearly set out. So this person does this, this person does that. There's very little overlap.
Okay.
And if one person's on vacation, it defaults to the superintendent or whatever happens.
It's just that you don't, which makes sense. You don't want the same person doing it.
It's the whole fox and the hen house.
Right, right.
And again, and this is not, this is not in reaction to any problems.
Right.
It's good processes that we're trying to put into place. The other thing that's coming, and we've had some inquiries through the website over the time that I've been here, is online bill collections and bill paying for water bills, and that will be rolled out for the next billing cycle. So that should help a lot of customers that want to pay that way. It also benefits us in that segregation of duties, so there's nobody actually handling that, the money for those particular bills. Item three is a development of a risk assessment process, and Kim Fails, our town accountant, is working on that. And really, that's a standard, a set of standard operating procedures and things that are intended to guard against fraud and abuse and waste and things like that. So we expect to have something to you either September or October. So we're trying to get through the closeout of fiscal '13, and again, with the new software, there's been some lag in that. So we're trying to get those things done, and then we'll get that risk assessment policy to you. Maintain tax title accounts. This is a treasure collector task, and this will be greatly aided by the new software that we've implemented. And I should say that the new software is up and running. We've committed bills through the new software. We've committed the real estate bills that went out July 1, and I believe we did the most recent set of excise bills in that as well. So we're making good progress in that. There's some more training coming up. They've already had initial training. They're going to have some more training in the next few weeks. So there's, with any new software, there's some growing pains as you learn how to use it and you work through the bugs, but.
Well, you're also trying to do it both ways.
Yes, yeah. So they really, it's especially troublesome for the treasure collector's office because they've still got things under the old software that they're, that they have to keep running. They've got the new software, and you're trying to keep things separate, but get it all in there, so. So there, kudos has to go out to them for having to manage all that as well as all their regular duties. And then finally, the last item was maintain an assessor's log of abatements, and that has been done. The assessors have set up a log to track their abatements and their balances in overlay. So that was one that, actually, that was a pretty easy one that was done pretty quickly after the audit came through, the management letter came through. So that's where we are.
Can we firm up the timelines on these, though?
Sure.
Because when we say within the next few weeks, that's kind of broad.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I'd like a commitment date.
Okay.
Okay? And, you know, you do what you have to do to make the commitment dates.
Okay.
Because otherwise, it just goes on and on, and then something else new comes up that you have to deal with. So we can get some commitment dates and get an update on that. I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks.
The other thing related to the audit, there's been some chatter, and Sue, you had asked me about it, and Colin had asked me about it, has to do with our bond rating. We get our bond rating through Moody's and Moody's Investment Services. They recently put us on a discontinued rating, they discontinued our rating, suspended our rating. It has to do with the lag in the fiscal '12 audit. We have every reason to believe in talking with our bond counsel that once we get the fiscal '12 audit done and Moody's gets a copy of it, that our AA3 rating will come back.
Because we're essentially in decent financial shape overall.
We're in very good financial shape. We've got good reserves, we've got strong, consistent management in place. And so Moody's has not been concerned about our ability to pay. It's just that when, you know, we've got outstanding commitments, outstanding debt obligations, and they want to know that, you know, that we've still got the wherewithal to honor those. And so they suspended the rating. It's, you know, it's not something that happens every day, but it doesn't seem to be anything that we need to be overly concerned with. Obviously, we want to be, we want to take what actions we need to take in order to wrap it up, get the fiscal '12 audit done for a number of reasons, just being.
How much time after they get, you know, which kind of speaks to Sue's point, the sooner we get this done, the sooner we can get the bond rating back. How much lag time between the conclusion of the audit and Moody's giving us? Is there any way to project that timeframe?
I can hopefully get you an answer at the next meeting. It's going to depend on Melant and Heath's schedule.
Right, right.
Obviously, they have a lot of clients.
Right.
And I know for the last week, they were in the field in other communities, so they, even if they had the data that they needed from us, they wouldn't have been working.
Well, I'm sure that in light of the fact that they look at the fact that we're taking corrective action to.
Right. And they want to, you know, they're working on fiscal '13 audits in most places right now, so they want to wrap up the fiscal '12 audit here and be able to move into '13. To get back to the question you asked a few minutes ago about, does the additional work cost us more money because it's costing, because it's taking more time from Melant and Heath? The flip side of that is they're expending more hours in fiscal '12. They'll probably expend less in fiscal '13 because they've already started and the systems are in place and things are, things are moving more smoothly.
Okay.
But I'll talk to Eric and see when, what he thinks for a turnaround.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. 3.11 Discuss scheduling work sessions for the following. Work session to discuss funding for road improvements and work session to discuss goals.
Yeah, we talked in previous meetings about, well, we spoke at length about the road improvements and what we're going to do with that. Ed and I are working on that and doing some, having some conversations with our colleagues in other communities to see how they fund their road improvements. The board, when we talked about that, talked about having a separate session for that sometime shortly after Labor Day. So I don't know if you want to, if you want to do that as a separate session or do that within a regular meeting. And similarly, Sue, you had asked to set up some time to talk about goals and where we are in terms of our accomplishments list, goals list. So I don't know if you still want to do those as separate evenings, or if you want to try to wrap them into a regular meeting. Figured I'd throw it out there for the.
I mean, my feeling is we can wrap the goals into a regular meeting.
Okay.
As an update and discussion. But I think the work session, that was going to be between us, capital planning and FinCom, right?
Correct, yeah.
I think that deserves its own meeting.
All right.
So why don't you, why don't you just see if you can coordinate a date on maybe one of our off weeks?
Okay.
Yeah, that was what I was going to say. I'd like to keep it to a Tuesday if at all possible.
Okay, we'll probably, we'll probably look at the 17th then of September, assuming that we've got time to work with, but.
Yeah, because we need to firm something up to start talking about it seriously.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure just one discussion isn't going to solidify everything.
Right. So it would be, more than likely be either September 17th or October 1, depending on what his preference, but.
Let's go for the 17th.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then if we need another one, we've got time for another.
Okay. And I'll let the FinCom and capital planning know.
And how do you guys feel about work session for goals within one of our meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds good.
So whenever you're ready to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Appointments, personnel and officials. 4.1 Vote to appoint Paul E. Sweet and Renee S. Fossey to the Abram S. French Fund Committee for terms from July 30, 2013, to June 30, 2014.
I make a motion that we appoint Paul E. Sweet and Renee S. Fossey to the Abram S. French Fund Committee for terms of July 30, 2013, to June 30, 2014.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
4.2 Vote to appoint Patricia O'Reilly as crossing guard for a term of July 30, 2013, to June 30, 2014.
Make a motion that we appoint Patricia O'Reilly as crossing guard for a term of July 30, 2013, 2013 to June 30, 2014.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5.1 Board of Selectmen Updates and Reports. You wanted to?
I don't have anything.
Yeah, I wanted to, you know, we've lost, recently, we've lost a few well-known members of the community, Marion Coyview, Jesse Hussey, and recently Roy Shepherd. And I wanted to just say, in regards to Mr. Shepherd, I wanted to give my condolences to the Shepherd family, and Roy was an example to all of us of the ideal businessman, civic leader, and most of all, family man. His legacy will be with this town for many years to come. I am proud to have known Mr. Shepherd, and we are indebted to him for all he has done for Townsend.
Certainly, our condolences to his family.
Will say.
Thank you, Colin. Anything else?
Yeah.
5.2 Town Administrator Updates and Reports. Got anything else?
The only thing I want to bring the board and the community up to date on is if anybody has driven by the police station lately and see that the roof is being torn off and a new roof installed, we funded that through the capital program about a year and a half ago, and so that project is underway. They started last week, and they will probably finish up around Thursday this week. So moving along very quickly. Nice, neat site. The company that we've hired keeps a nice, clean site. Mark Mercurio's been working with them, and the chief's been on site, and no complaints. They've been very easy to work with, and so we'll be in good shape for the next 30 years or so with the police station, at least as far as the roof goes. Nothing else on that.
It's amazing how quickly it passes.
Question, Andy. Somebody said there was another tour of the old library?
I'm sorry?
Was there a tour planned?
There hasn't been. A couple of people have asked to come through this week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We get a couple of requests every year to go through, so.
Okay.
We generally accommodate, and depending on the level of interest, we'll look at putting out an RFP again for that to see if there's interest in somebody leasing that space from us.
Okay, 5.3 Review and sign payroll warrants.
I make a motion that we review and sign the payroll warrant out of session.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sign bills payable warrant.
I make a motion that we review and sign the bills payable warrant out of session.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion, please?
I make a motion that we enter executive session under General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, regarding collective bargaining and litigation and adjourn from executive session.
Second it.
Need a roll call, please?
Colin McNabb, aye.
Bopamond, an aye.
Silicio, aye.
Just a question. Andy, will you put your letter, the Selectman on the line on the website?
I typically don't, well, it's, I can, I guess. I don't have any objection.
I agree, that's why. Maybe you could put it on the website.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, it wasn't in the packet, but normally it would be in the packet, so.
Do you want it?
Okay. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Good night, bye.